Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for a city council work session. Connie, would you go ahead and call the row?
Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Lurie?
Yes.
Taya?
Yes.
Stevens?
Here.
Wow.
Here. Before we get going, I just want to let everybody know if you see Councilwoman Stevens get up and leave, she's got an appointment with the county commissioners. So she's got a, she'll probably be leaving in 45 minutes, something like that. So just want to let everybody not to panic when she gets up and leaves or think she's leaving for personal reasons. So with that, we'll go ahead and another thing I should have made mention of right now, agenda item number three, planning and zoning commission update, and number five, police union quarterly update, have both been pulled from the agenda. With that, we'll move to agenda item number two is historic preservation commission update. Representatives from the historic preservation commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Hello, thank you for having me today, council. My name is Marty Biscara. I am the current chair of the historic preservation commission for the city of Pocatello. I have a quick rundown of our current activities and what we have done in the past fiscal year. Let me go ahead and get started here for you. Number one, our recent accomplishments. We've continued design reviews of exterior alterations in the downtown Pocatello Historic District. In fiscal year 2021, 20 applications for certificate of appropriateness have been reviewed by the commission compared to 19 applications reviewed in fiscal year 2020. The majority of certificate of appropriateness that the commission reviews is for signage. Other applications that have been reviewed include some of the following: several mural art projects at various locations in the district, the newly refurbished Oasis Bar and 210 Club neon displays located on the Roos Building, otherwise known as the Oasis Bar, the rehabilitation project at the Peterson Building, including the renovated stained glass windows of the front facade, and facade improvements on the auditorium building located at 237 East Center Street. We are continuing to raise funds for the Brady Chapel Centennial Campaign. This campaign seeks to raise funds needed for the complete restoration of the historic Brady Memorial Chapel. It is our hope that through continued and future collaboration with the city of Pocatello, local banks and businesses, members of the community and grant programs, that we can raise the needed funds in time for the chapel's 100-year anniversary on Memorial Day 2022 so that it may be rededicated by the city in memory of James H. Brady and for any and all appropriate public use. When restored, the Brady Chapel will be available as a venue for funerals, small weddings, and various other receptions and events as means for the upkeep and maintenance of this historic structure. We have hosted several fundraising and open house events since our last commission update. These events include the Before All Hallows' Eve Scavenger Hunt event that occurred last year on October 24th. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic as well as cold and inclement weather, we had a large turnout come in support where we raised $600. The Veterans Day Open House at the Brady Chapel on November 11th where we raised 235. The Memorial Day Open House at the Brady Chapel on May 31st where we raised another 600. Finally, we hosted a summer gala at the Brady Chapel which took place on August 26th. At this event, we hosted 20 individuals who spent an evening with the commission to learn more about the chapel, the current restoration campaign, and the future uses of the chapel. In total, we have raised $10,959.39 with more on the way from the gala event. Additionally, we have a $5,000 matching grant from the Idaho Heritage Trust that was awarded in 2019, and we intend to apply for additional grants in the near future to match what we have currently raised as well as seeking non-matching grants, large, or excuse me, non-matching large dollar grants. Current and upcoming projects: the Brady Chapel Centennial Campaign is ongoing until we can raise an estimated $250,000 to completely restore this historic structure. Future fundraising events we currently have planned or in the works include the following: the annual Before All Hallows' Eve Scavenger Hunt event at Mountain View Cemetery on October 9th. The Veterans Day Open House at the Brady Chapel is scheduled to take place on November 11th, 2021. We are continually discussing the possibility of additional fundraising events and public outreach opportunities that may be planned in fulfillment of our mission, goals, and efforts to preserve and protect historic structures and districts within the city of Pocatello with a focused effort for fundraising aimed at our current project, the Brady Chapel. We are beginning to discuss how to provide outreach as a commission to property and business owners as well as tenants in the historic district to ensure that they are aware and understand the standards of the district. We want to share our interest and desire to protect and preserve our city's heritage and hope that those who choose to locate in the district share or at least understand the standards we have been commissioned to uphold. We are continuing our efforts to coordinate with staff on identifying potential historic districts and buildings throughout the city that could potentially be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. We are continuing our partnership with Old Town Pocatello Incorporated on projects to improve and promote the downtown Pocatello Historic District. We are also continuing our partnership with the Relight the Night Committee to restore and relight historic neon sign displays in the historic district. Planning staff attends the Relight the Night Committee meetings on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. Lastly, we want the commission, or excuse me, lastly, we want the council to be aware and/or reminded that we have adopted historic preservation plan for the city which outlines the goals and objectives of historic preservation in the city as well as outlines some activities that the commission seeks to participate in. If you are interested in examining this document, please reach out to the staff liaison, James Englesey. Thank you for this opportunity for the Historic Preservation Commission to provide an update on our continued efforts to preserve the history, culture, and identity of Pocatello. We would be happy to answer any questions, if any at all, at this time.
Roger?
Yes.
So I'm trying to gain context. You're trying to get the chapel restored by next year?
Yes, that is, that is our current intent. It is a bit of a stretch at the moment, but we are definitely trying to make that happen.
That's the goal, and how much money have you raised towards that $250,000?
Um, I believe currently we've raised over $10,000. I'm trying to remember, I think last year we had raised a little bit as well.
In total, we have just over $10,000.
Okay.
With a $5,000 grant.
So about 15 of the $250,000?
Yes.
Good.
And that doesn't include the gala, right?
No. No, we have heard from a few members that attended that there may be some large donations coming our way, but we have, we have yet to see them, so I can't speak exactly on what those numbers would be at the moment.
Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, from time to time, we get questions about particularly, at least the ones I run into, have been around some of the murals and how they relate to the historic, what, atmosphere of Old Town, our historic district. And I'm just wondering when those, they haven't been questioned so much as comments. What, what should, how should those be referred? How can those get answered? It sounds as though possibly accessing the plan you referenced would be one way. I don't know if that could be made available on the website somewhere, but, but there are sometimes differences of opinion about whether or not some of the artwork is pertinent to the nature of historic downtown. I'm not offering an opinion, I'm simply the messenger.
That is, that is understandable. It is something that we look at on a case-by-case basis, and we usually kind of try to get a little bit of context of what the, the piece is going to be. Art pieces particularly are a little bit different than, say, a historic alteration where they're usually done in the sense of artistic expression. They are looked at a little bit different. We do try to maintain some kind of amount that, you know, it is reflective of something, you know, not necessarily even specific to Pocatello, but Idaho history in general, and understanding that there is a little bit of artistic expression that comes along with that. Where they are art pieces, you know, if it was, if it was something that was more along the lines of building signage, for example, that would be, that would be kind of a different scenario, but where they all come across as, as art murals, I don't want to say that we're more lax on it, but we do appreciate the art as well. We think it adds a little bit of interest to Pocatello and helps to bring some individuals in.
Can I add to that, Marty?
Yes, absolutely.
In addition to that, we refer to the national standards for historic preservation when, when people select an area for a mural. We, a lot of that decision is based off of what material they're putting it on. And so when it comes to murals, we really care about the material of the building to preserve that. And so if they're putting it, if they want to put it on a brick wall that's, it's raw brick, it's historic, that wouldn't be appropriate as far as the national standards go. But if it's on a wall where it's already painted, it's already been altered, that's usually where we see those murals go up are already altered materials on historic buildings.
Not, not, again, I'm, I'm not offering an opinion here, but the mural, and again, not to criticize the artist or the property owner or anyone, but the mural I frequently hear about, I would say certainly once a month from different people would be the, and I'm not good on streets and, and addresses, but the, the black wall with the, the space, spacemen, and I've read the, I've read the rationale for how that ties into the past and future of Pocatello, but folks are missing that connection, they're not making that connection, and, you know, are a bit bewildered about how that furthers the identity of, of a historic district. So, and again, I'm not trying to pick out a specific, it's just that that's, that's the example that I frequently hear about.
There was a number of murals that had actually come before my, my time as chair that I'm not too privy to at the moment, so I'm not sure the exact selection process that they had in that mural specifically. And I'm currently trying to think of which, which one in particular it is.
It's kind of off the rails.
Is it?
Station Square.
Station Square?
Yeah.
That, that one was a little bit before myself, actually, so I'm not, I'm not terribly sure that, the process that they went through in determining that one.
And that fits what Jim was talking about. That was a wall that was already altered.
Exactly.
So it's, I mean, it is artistic expression, but it's on a surface that was allowed because it was already altered.
Right, I don't, at least for me, I know one has complained about the fact that there's a mural, you know, they haven't been concerned about the surface being altered, but just
The content.
Bewildered about how, you know, how, as I said before, how that adds to the overall atmosphere.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm imagining in your plan, you have criteria outlined that are considered so that, for example, an artist could, could look at those and then, or a member of the public could look at them and then consider, you know, what was approved and, and be able to understand the connection between the criteria and the goals and, and.
You know, thinking back on it.
That would be their design standards.
I was going to say, I believe it's design standards currently. Is there currently something in there at the moment for that?
Design review criteria.
I believe there is, yes, okay.
So maybe it would help folks if that could somehow be posted. It would certainly help me.
Yes.
Because I would be able to refer them to.
And so that is actually, that is something that we're trying to do currently as, as a commission to provide a little bit more outreach to individuals that are, that are not even necessarily new to Pocatello, but try to help inform them of what the standards we have, the guidelines that we, we utilize in, in determining, you know, certificates of appropriateness and to make sure that everybody is kind of aware. It seems like there's, there's kind of a disparity right now between what we know and what the public knows.
Right.
So we are in the process of trying to reach out to business owners, tenants, and to inform the general public of what it is exactly that we are looking for in any kind of building alterations.
Super. Thank you both very much for that. I think it'll be really helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, Linda?
Yeah.
And I just wanted to thank you all for your ongoing efforts and work, and it's a pleasure to work with the HPC. And I also think that the, the efforts to reach out to the community are really valuable. We've had a lot of discussions about, you know, how you, how you grant certificates of appropriateness and what that's based on. And some people believe that you just sort of make up the rules and whatever you want to do, or whether you like something or don't like something.
Yeah.
But there are national historic preservation standards, and I just want to make it clear, and you've said this, but I want to repeat the idea that you're following those national standards.
Yes, absolutely. And this is, this is something I, I don't believe I touched on in here as well, but we are, as a commission, we are actually taking training opportunities as well for commission members to better understand the national guidelines and what it, what it takes to really preserve historic architecture. That's, that's something that we are constantly looking at as well.
And we had a wonderful walking tour just last week.
Yes.
With the commission, and Jim took us all around the historic district, and we looked at all the buildings and the signs. And I mean, it's one thing to have people come in here and present what they're doing, but to actually walk around the community and, and look at things in place and kind of see how they turned out or, or see things that maybe didn't come before us that should have, or, but I appreciate all the, the work that you do and.
Thank you.
Want to thank you for that.
Super, thank you, Marty.
Awesome. Well, hey, thank you.
You bet. Number three, agenda item three was pulled, and so we'll jump to agenda item number four, Sister City Committee update. Representatives from the Sister City Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Do we have? We got a sticker from the Pocatello Arts Council. I guess that's Arts Council, not Sister City. Okay, then we'll move to agenda item number 16, or number 16.
It's been a long week for me.
I know it's just early, but it's been a long week. So we'll move to agenda item six.
I thought we were through.
Agenda item five has been pulled as well, so agenda item six is Title 17 subdivision text amendments.
Let me grab Jim, I think he was anticipating a lifetime.
All right, I'll read slow. This is what happens when we skip over things and we jump to 16 instead of six, I guess. Agenda item six is Title 17 subdivision text amendments. Planning and Development Services staff will be present to discuss the proposed update of the zoning regulations related to maximum height limits. And soon as they give, golly, it looks like we should jump down to number eight, right? We got at least a couple of you here, you're ready to roll. Should we do it? Counsel, that wouldn't hurt. All right, let's jump to agenda item.
Oh, there he is.
Never mind, Jim's back. Somebody in the audience should have spoke up a little bit. Come on, Jim.
I can come there. It'll be service of your pleasure.
I do have a digital presentation. I also have it in paper. I don't know what's going to be best for you.
So Jim, we have a question for you. Would it be better for you if we skip down to eight and come back to you after that discussion?
That's totally fine.
And that will give you some time to prepare after the last presentation you have?
I'm ready to go whenever. I just need to set up the digital presentation.
Well, why don't you work on setting, setting up the digital presentation, and we'll go to jump to agenda item eight then.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going to jump to agenda item eight is the WPC Facilities Plan Study and Priority One Recommendations. Representatives from Water Pollution Control, WPC, Keller Associates, and Stantec Consulting have been, will be present to discuss design services for WPC facilities, planning study priority one, improvements and recommended in the facility plan and presented to the council at the May 13, 2021 work session. The WPC Facilities Planning Study has received approval from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, adoption of the study, and approval of the Design Services Contract with Keller Associates and Stantec Consulting with present, Stantec Consulting will be present, will be presented at the future regular city council meeting for the council consideration. Could we make that any longer for us?
The engineers wrote it, I did not write it.
Engineers wrote it, not you. You started writing.
It was more complicated than it needs to be, right?
We want Levi to start writing again. Levi, we'll turn the time over to you.
All right. Good morning, Mary Council. Levi Adams, Superintendent of the Water Pollution Control Department. With me, we have Jim Mullins from Keller Associates, Nick Smith from Stantec, and then Skylar Allen with us here as well. Back in March, we presented the finished facility plan that we'd been working on for the last year and a half or so, and since then, we've submitted that to DEQ, which has been approved. I believe there was one minor comment that discussed meshing that with the facility plan we have with the collection systems, which is what we will do, we planned on doing. Anyway, so everything came through wonderfully, DEQ has approved it. From there on, or from now, we will be asking in the next meeting to adopt the plan through an ordinance. I'm looking at Jared to make sure I'm saying this correctly. And then we begin with the resolution, right? Ordinance, what are we doing?
I don't know. Yeah, we're bringing a resolution.
We're bringing a resolution.
It would be an official council action.
Okay, to adopt the facility plan, which then we will use as a template for the next upcoming projects as well as how we're going to work on our rate study and our facility plan, how we're going to fund the projects that are upcoming. To go through this quickly here, we have our, our existing treatment that we have. We treat not only the city of Pocatello, we treat Chubak as well as all of the industries within Pocatello and Chubak, and then we also treat the septic tanks in the surrounding area as well. Then we move on there, we'll go on to some of the recommended improvements that we will have coming up. Within the next five years, there's some ambitious planning that we need to do. We need to upgrade our blower system. The equipment that we have is aged. There's better equipment out there. We will, we're looking to upgrade the equipment that's there to increase efficiency as well as productivity with it. The major upgrade that we need to get done is with the bio solids. Our current process is we produce a bio solid in a wet form which is stored in the lagoon. At this point in time, the lagoon gets full at several different times of the year, and those solids return back into the plant, taking up space in the plant so we can't treat the incoming solids from the city. It creates great problems. It, right now, the plant has the ability to handle this, but with any more growth, it's going to be tight and may start affecting our effluent that we discharge to the river. Right now, we are fine. We meet our requirements from our permit very well. There's no issues, but we can see it coming. We need to get this project taken care of. That's probably the next big project that you guys will see coming up. And then there is other things that kind of, we've had discussions before about a new operations building, a new administration building. We have a rather unique situation out there. We've turned the old superintendent's home into an office. It has worked for years. It's been past its useful life. Something needs to be done there, as well as some smaller in-housing, some upgrades and improvements throughout. You can see a map here with the several different upgrades, kind of the order of which we've gone through, this is all in the facility plan as well. And you can kind of see, see the training that we're going to see, or we've seen from 2015 to 2020. Populations continue to grow, the solids coming into the plants continue to grow. What we've, we're discharging to the river is becoming cleaner, we're doing a better job, we've reduced the amount of solids going to the river, so that means there's more solids for us to deal with in our bio solid program as well, as well as the increased solids coming into the plant. Over the past three years, we've increased the amount of loads that we've hauled out of the plant by 30%. This is putting a great strain on our operations staff. There's only so many hours in the day, and there's only so much time that we can actually apply. When we apply our bio solids, we're doing this around the crop schedules. We can't apply to growing crops, we have to wait till after a harvest, so there's a very limited window that we can do this land application. And so it becomes difficult, you know, when we say the lagoon gets full, it becomes difficult to just, well, let's just start hauling, well, there's no place to go, because the beneficial use that we're required to use our bio solids for is not able to just go dump on a field and just get rid of it. That's not the whole, the point of the bio solid program. The bio solid programs have a beneficial use, which is a fertilizer and soil amendment to the ground. So that window becomes very tight, and it's a very stressful time of year for my employees. Right now, we're in the middle of it, and those guys are working 12-hour shifts, we split the crew in half, so we're working 24 hours a day, six days a week. The poor guys get one day off. And so it's, it's not a matter of getting more employees because there just isn't the time to do it. We would still have to do it in that particular amount of time. If we're able to de-water the sludge and make it a thicker sludge, you're going to change what you're applying to the field. You're going to remove 90% of the water, which removes a lot of the load. So instead of this 2,600 loads a year we'd have to go out, you know, you would divide that and be closer to 500 loads, which makes it a lot easier for my employees to get it out and a lot less stressful on the plant itself, because when you de-water, it's sitting literally in a pile on your facility and able to apply it whenever you need to. Those solids aren't coming back into the plant.
So Levi?
Kind of in the middle of all this, I understand that composting is longer out.
Right.
It's de-watering. Is there a scale of efficiency if we would move to composting? Would that really help with the solids that you're having transfer?
This is the first step towards that. We need to de-water those solids to make compost out of it.
Okay.
So yes, this is, this is, I remember the council was very interested in that. This is the first step. We need to get this building built first. Funding is going to be down the road. When Jeff and I, when I started, I had a conversation with Jeff, and our financial goal was to pay for everything, not to get loans and pay loans back. So we've done a good job getting the finances ready to pay for some of these projects without having to go out and try to get loans or bonds to pay for these projects. So de-watering is going to be taken care of. The next step then will be compost, whether it's a small pilot project, and then we'll just move on from there. But yes, that's definitely the, my goal, that's what I would like to see done.
It's a step by step process.
It's a step. We got to get step one done.
So then this $9,703,000 is the total cost of all of the de-watering stuff?
That is, that is de-watering, that is also blower improvements, that's a pumping system on digester number three, and that's also the rehabilitation of the lid on digester number three.
Is that all part of de-watering, though?
No, that's not.
Okay.
So this will be breaking down. De-watering, if you go on to the next page, the de-watering is going to be.
Oh, I see.
Near four and a half million dollars right there.
Okay.
So those are the engineering estimates. As far as record goes, they've been fairly close. Construction is very volatile. Hopefully, we have a good idea what that's going to be, but in this day and age, I can't swear that that estimate's going to be perfect, but it's probably, I have good faith in what this estimate is. So again, we have some more slides addressing what we, we need with the mechanical de-watering is the most pressing on my end. The. The rehabilitation of digester number three, we have, digester number three has a metal floating lid on it. The coating on the inside of that is going away, so the metal itself is starting to rust. We need to get that taken care of before we end up having to replace the whole lid. It's going to be a new coating on that as well. And then the blower upgrades, like I said, the equipment that we have, it's an older technology, there's way more efficiency. You know, some of our priorities in the wastewater fill is energy efficiency. We can put in better equipment, a better process that will allow us to reduce our energy costs. There's a lot of energy that goes into blowers. If we can increase those, as long as having newer equipment. The new operations administration building, we are not going to push that beyond the 30% design. We'd like to come in and show you guys what we have in mind. It's tough to say, well, we're going to build a new building, and it's going to cost $2 million. It's tough to visualize what we're talking about. I'd rather have something that I can present, that you have questions that you can ask, and we can get those answered. So that is down the road. I think there's more important, like I said, the de-watering is what I need to get taken care of, first off.
Followed. Good time. So when you, if you reduce your loads to 500 from 2,500, that should, you're going to reallocate staff to do other jobs to help with that efficiency, I assume?
Correct. There will be some additional work that needs to be done, because we're, we're creating a new process. So those hours that would then be, you know, in a short period of time, those operations that we then we spread out over the year, working this other piece of equipment. But that does keep us, our limitations, although we've done a, a study as far as personnel, what we need, what we've done, and it showed us in that, that the hours that we would spend applying bio solids, there'll still be some hours there, then will be reallocated to running this other process, as well as continuing on, you know, all over preventative maintenance. Right now, we're fairly stressed as far as our staff goes. This will be a big help to us. Like I said, we, we chipped ahead some of the costs. It's expensive. Anything in the wastewater world is expensive. It's their one-off equipment a lot of time. It's at, built per order, engineering design, it's, it's, there's nothing off the shelf that you can just go buy. There's some of the related costs, the $9 million is in that first phase. We'll begin to work on the other phases by putting those in the rate studies, making sure that we do keep the rates. They will grow, but they will grow at that same steady rate that we've had for the last five years. Our goal is to keep it at that 3%. The capital improvement plan from, in our engineering study in the facility plan, shows that we should be able to stay within that 3% growth and not have to go out and get money, not have to go out and borrow money to pay for these projects. So what I'm going to bring to you guys on Thursday, next Thursday, is how we're going to pay for the engineering services. The engineering services are going to be 1.5 million approximately. What that will cover will be the design, all the way up to bid, of the de-watering building, the blower improvements, as well as digester number three, the pumping and the rehab. It will bring the administration building up to a 30% design, which then we can have and talk about when, when the funds are available for that as well. To pay for this, we didn't put it in the budget this year, because we didn't have the numbers. I didn't want to just put something out there not knowing. I didn't think that was appropriate. What we're going to do is we do currently have debt for WPC, and we have a debt service payment of about $3 million every year, which is budgeted into our operating fund. We also have a capacity fee account, where we've been collecting capacity fees since we started collecting those, which is honestly before my time. I can't remember, Mr. Mayor, when we started there.
2006.
So we have a large account with those. So what I've worked with Jim on is we're going to do a budget amendment, we're going to transfer, instead of using our operating fund to make this debt service payment, we're going to use the capacity fees to make the debt service payment. So we'll transfer $3 million out of our connection fees, capacity fee fund, to pay into that, to pay that debt service payment of $3 million. That frees up $3 million in our operating fund, which we then can spend the 1.5 for the engineering firm, and still have another million and a half available for the continuing constructions, for these other projects, as well as some other funding.
And is that, is that a legal use of capacity?
It, it is. We had, we talked to Jim.
Well, I mean, I'm just asking, I, because I don't know, but I just want to make sure that we're not doing something.
That's one of the most clear-cut methods of using capacity.
Okay, perfect.
To pay for debt service.
Yeah, it's.
So what, so what we do is we build up that capacity fee fund until we get enough to make a debt service payment, and then we, then we make that debt service payment. We've traditionally done that in the past, and so every, every four or five years, we get enough in there that we can make a debt service payment. So this is appropriate.
Great.
Yeah, we had a long conversation with Jim to make sure that we were doing everything that we need to do, because it's, like I said, it's slightly gray of what you can use. Idaho law is not very specific, but we do know this is something that we for sure can do.
And Jeff and I have had an extended conversation about the same subject as well, and I'm comfortable with it.
Lawyer's good, we're good.
Remind me, a few years ago, out of the WPC, there was an extension, it runs in my mind, that it was a couple hundred thousand dollars for the lab, like a new addition built on.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about Jeff. How much was that? Do you remember, like the ballpark? Wasn't it like $250?
Yeah, a couple hundred thousand dollars kind of sticks in my mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with the, with the concepts that would be set to engineering for the new operations building, is that getting ripped down?
No, because that's, that's still for the laboratory and for laboratory staff. So they're still going to need that space.
So that part would stay?
That part would stay.
Which is the house part?
There would be an additional building, yeah, the house, the house is going to go, hopefully, before it falls down. But it's going to, the house is going to go a new, so there'll be administration office, there'll be a training center, there will be operations as well in there, the server rooms will be in there, as well as all of the file storages and the, that we need to have as well.
But that, that new part that we just barely did is state?
Yes.
That, that will be still a really good change.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so I was just curious.
Okay, any other questions?
How much land do you have out there?
Oh, you know, I'm not 100% sure. We're not landlocked. We do have some more room for growth. If you go back to slide 10, or page 10 on there, you can, you can see the general area. Where we actually discharge is a piece of land that we have to lease from Mullins. We've tried to buy it several times, he's not interested. It's just right there, sliver across the river. But as far as the land itself goes, we have enough room to get through 2040 pretty easily as far as expansion goes with the rest of the plant and its facility. Beyond that, it's, it's tough to judge. Right now, we're not short on land. I know that doesn't specifically answer your question, but I don't have an acreage for you.
Well, and I, I just see in some of these illustrations that there's natural process through the facility, and I'm wondering if we ought to be planning for when the expansion comes at every stage, you know, it has someplace to go. You know, I, you know, what's that?
Right.
Step one, two, three, you could landlock yourself by just how you configure stuff.
Right. No, and there is, I believe it's in this facility plan, I know there was one in the last one as well, showing where future equipment would be. We're going to place, you know, clarifiers at this particular position, digestors are going to go up near where the office is, and probably where the office is, where the current office, the house is right now. Yeah, well, there, there is a plan. We do have it all laid out where future things are going to be.
Of course, we don't know what the future will bow in terms of the answers to.
Here is a copy of the facilities plan, you know, for some light reading and if you're interested. So a lot of that information is contained in here, and Levi mentioned it's going to, it's a guiding document to help the staff move forward for the next 15 or 20 years. 37 acres, is your course?
37 acres.
Okay.
Seth Skyler.
Any other questions? Okay, super, Levi.
Okay. And like I said, with that, next week, we'll, we will bring those requests to the council meeting.
All righty, super.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim and Nick, thanks for being with us today. Okay, then we are going to back up to agenda item number six, which is Title 17 subdivision text amendments. Planning and Development Service staff will be present to discuss the proposed update of the zoning regulations related to maximum height limits.
May have a sister sitting here.
I think she got the riverside going, of course.
Thank you.
Just saw them making lots of pictures.
Yeah, I think that's it, of course.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jim Engelsi, Long Range Senior Planner for the City of Pocatello. And I'm going to go over with you some of these proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding height limits. The purpose of these proposed amendments will be first, and then I'll go over just a summary of those text amendments, and you have those as a reference. Then we'll go over some visualization, because sometimes, at least for, for me, it's hard to imagine what those height limits could be, and so we'll go over that, and then any questions you may have. So the purpose of these proposed amendments is, one, the comprehensive plan encourages smart growth, and if you don't know what smart, smart growth is, it's very complex, but these graphics should give you a pretty simple idea of what it is. It's identifying what our city is from urban core to suburban zones to rural. That's a very broad explanation of what smart growth is, but in general, these, these proposed changes to the height limits will help establish this type of what we call the transect, going from our natural or rural to our urban cores. And then, second, these proposed amendments will provide greater flexibility for commercial and industrial development, and encourage a higher level of compatibility for surrounding land uses, as you see in this transect graphic. And so what we're proposing is changes in height limits to our commercial and industrial zoning districts, as well as ramping up our, what we call our transition buffers from residential zones, as they transition into commercial and industrial. This will provide a smooth transition from different land uses, and so we will hopefully see more, less of, less of conflict between residential, industrial, and commercial. And so as we go into it, here's a map of citywide. It may be a little difficult to, to see, see this, but we'll go into different areas within the city. These colors represent height limits, not zoning districts. Just keep that in mind. And the key here is you'll have in your packet, all the different colors represent a different height, yellow being 35, orange 45, red 75, pink 105, and purple 120. And each of our zones within the city correspond with those colors. I just don't want to get confused between zoning and, and height limit colors, so that's, that's for, just for your reference there. So as we go into the different areas within the city, we'll go north and kind of go south. So you see here in North Gate how those heights and transition buffers will work. And so you see here that, that pink is a commercial area, and as you get into residential, you'll see red, and then to orange. And so thinking of the, the heights, that pink color would have a height limit of 105. The red would be 75, and then the orange would be 45. And then the yellow that you see is 35, our lowest height.
Help me visualize this a little bit, if you would. Because 105 or 75, I've got to figure out how many stories of buildings exist that get it inside my head, so.
105 is around seven stories, give or take.
Okay. 120 would be?
About 10.
15 or 16.
Yeah, nine or 10 stories. Currently, our current height maximum is in the central commercial, which is 75 feet, and our commercial general, the pink that you see here, would be 60 feet. As we go down, this is the Yellowstone Corridor, that you see, that big pink up and down area. You start to see a little bit of purple here. Purple is 120. And that, the big purple spot you see there is the naval ordinance plant. And as you can see here, you see a little more defined buffer areas going from commercial back into residential. And as we get into 3D, we'll, we'll see that a little bit better. And then the downtown area, you see a little more of those buffers come into play, transitioning from our residential neighborhoods into our commercial cores. And then South Fifth, around Ross Park, you see that a little bit better. I also want to mention that all this mapping is with the help of Ryan Howerton and our GIS group. He was instrumental in getting our, our thoughts into maps, so just wanted to put that out there. And then finally, the 3D, this is, this is around the college neighborhood, looking into downtown, and you can really see in this spot how those buffers come into play, 35 being the residential, and as you get near Fifth Avenue, it starts to ramp up from 35 to 45 in the orange, red is 75, and then the pink is 105. And you can see purple in the background, which is 120. And so again, this plays on the idea of that urban, that urban transect going from rural to residential to our urban cores. It provides that, that flexibility. And honestly, you're not, you're not going to see what we imagine here as these maximum heights, they're all flatlined, and you're going to see different heights in buildings, and you're probably not going to see much in the near future being this high. It'll, it'll take years to, to imagine some of these heights. But this is, what you see here is what the maximum would be based off of our proposed ordinance changes.
Jim, can you repeat the transect from, you had rural and to urban core, what was the other one?
There, there's a few.
But you said three things.
So, yeah, natural, rural, to suburban, residential, and then into the urban centers.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, in summary, this is one step towards creating a zoning ordinance that, that honors smart growth, provides greater flexibility for development, especially in our commercial cores, to allow a little bit higher development. Infill would, would honor infill and a little bit increased density in our commercial cores. It would also ensure a greater level of compatibility in our land use and in our urban form. And so with that, any questions the council may have?
Jim, is this high enough in some of these areas, the urban areas and stuff? If we're interested in, in growing? If we're interested in growing, not out, but in and up, is this high enough, or do we need more heights? I know there's a concern about the sprawl in the community, and so I'm just curious. I think this is good movement.
I think at this point, if we want to see more of, I guess, even or transitional development, we want to ensure that those grow steadily, and so this will be helpful in that. Currently, you know, downtown, our highest building is Pocatello High School, which is around eighty feet tall. And with our proposed changes, central commercial would allow for a hundred and twenty feet. And so, it would, you know, if there was a building that would be built at a hundred and twenty max, it would be higher than Pocatello High School.
Okay.
I believe naval ordinance plants are around a hundred and twenty, give or take. And so, you're looking at maximum height buildings of the size of naval ordinance plant as a possibility.
Well, you did say it'd take quite a minute, quite a few years for us to grow up to this anyway, and so it's probably...
And if there's, if we find a need in the future, as we get a little bit, see a little bit higher buildings, we can always approach this and change it.
Sure.
And offer proposed changes to that.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Along with what he's saying, I could see a zone, the ultimate city core, where we really don't have a height limit, because we push everything there. And I don't see the need in having a height restriction. If we really want everything to go there, we should be letting people dream a little larger than what our ordinance with the limitation allows. Just my own feeling here. You know, if I come in and I say, oh, well, I'd like to build a hundred-and-fifty-foot building, but you've got a hundred-and-twenty-foot limits all over. If I knew there were someplace in town that I could start to develop my dream, I might start working on it, rather than just hit a wall. So, just a feeling that there might be a zone where we lead to, but that that zone would not have a limit. The only constraints would be what the building standards would require.
Along those lines, could that be done with an exception, right?
Yeah, you could write in there, and I think we have some exceptions in the code, where if there's a building that someone wanted to build higher than those restrictions in certain zones, we could allow for an approval process that, you know, we can look at that individual case. Because part of what we don't want to do, too, is have a situation where you have this really tall building in the middle of short buildings, and it creates an issue of bouchette, and you have issues with shadows and things like that, that really affect some of those other neighboring properties. And so, that transect idea is really an important idea to think about as you're protecting the surrounding properties, but also, you do want to allow for those opportunities for people to dream and have some of those things happen. And here in Pocatello, I don't think you're going to see those tall, tall buildings for quite a long while. But we can't have exceptions written into it that gives us, as a developer, gives them that opportunity to think of proposals.
Well, and with that, I guess that if we start seeing a number of exceptions, then that's the indication that we probably need to really look at that. Linda, and then Heidi.
I agree with what you're saying, that that transition, or as you're calling it, the transect idea is really important, that you don't end up with just sort of a mishmash of different heights, but you have kind of zones of levels where it's a nice transition. Obviously, we could look on a case-by-case basis, but I'm excited. So, I don't have a question, but I had a comment. I'm just really excited to see us promote and encourage infill and increase in density as opposed to just sprawling. I think that is really the way to go, so I'm excited for this plan, and thank you for going in this direction.
Yeah, I was excited to see this also, so thank you, and good job on that. My thought that, which is prompted, is kind of piggybacking on what the mayor said about do we need to maybe include more. I just know every time we do an ordinance, we have to incur extra expense to publish and whatever, and so I was curious what your thought was on even some of the other areas, like the residential areas. I've noticed there's more of a trend toward the wall ceilings, you know? It used to be like you built a house and it's an eight-foot ceiling, but now people are like, I want ten or twelve. I talked to somebody the other day that was building a house of fourteen foot, you know, it's still a ranch, so it's going to meet the residential requirements, but just out of curiosity, like, does an extra five feet or something help out with potentially some issues we might run into down the road? I just had heard a builder say to me one time that sometimes on houses that have like a walkout basement, if they're doing a two-story, they run into height issues that way, and so then they have to do lower ceilings, and so I was just wondering if you thought maybe while we were at it, that would be a good time to maybe, and maybe it's not as much of an issue as I think it could potentially become, but I was just curious what you thought about that, if we should throw that in.
Sure.
We don't have to redo.
Right. Some of our tallest homes are up in the Highland area, around the temple, and they're the only ones that are really reaching the thirty-five max in our low densities. And within our high densities, we still allow additional ten feet to forty-five feet. That is something that we could look at if people are looking to build higher homes.
So, when we measure that thirty-five feet, if they have a walkout basement, do we go from the lowest point, or do we go from the upper point where, what do you measure?
Yeah, so it's from grade to the peak of the home, and if it's built on a slope, we do the average.
Okay.
So, we go around the home and measure from several different areas and take the average of the height of the home.
Yeah, I knew that's what it was, but there's still some that get really close to that, like you're talking about in that area, and so I just wonder if even just a little bit helps, you know?
Yeah.
Just so you don't have as many people taking up your time down in the planning department trying to figure out.
Sure. So, we got Linda and then Roger.
I forgot to mention one thing that I really like about this is that it adds to my, or supports my dream of making us a much more walkable city, and that's one of the best things you get about density and infill as opposed to sprawl, is that then you can have a more bike-ped-friendly place and walkable city, so.
And those are principles of smart growth, too.
Yes, exactly, and so I really appreciate that part of it, too.
Super. Roger?
I was just going to hook onto what Heidi says, because as we increasingly get to slope issues, I think that really pushes the, what could be the average on a house height. Because like, I have a walkout basement in my house, I didn't build the house, I bought it. But I also have a retaining wall about twenty, thirty feet from that back door with the neighbor, and that's a six-foot retaining wall, and so that lot was artificially elevated, and I have no idea how high it is, I just know that when I've been up there on the very edge, and I don't go there anymore, it looks like it's sixty feet.
It's a lot higher when you're looking down.
Yeah, but I can see that maybe we need a little more ability to move in that direction, because at the same time, when I mow my lawn, one side's not too bad, but the other side's really steep, and I'm probably ten feet above the street level on one side of my house. So, I can see, you know, what Heidi and those builders might be talking about in terms of the average, because I got a whole wall back, I mean, you know, if I build my house, the length of it is with the lockout basement, then that should be a big part of the average. So, I think we probably need a little more adaptability than maybe we're allowing for as we start getting into some of these areas, like up in the Highland area, or, God, they've built some retaining walls up there that are probably that high.
Yeah, I just noticed, like, as I go to Creative Homes in Utah or Boise, like, almost all the houses are having a lot higher ceilings inside, and so I'm just curious if that's going to start to be a trend here as well, more than what we've seen.
One of the things we can do, too, is look at how we measure that height. You know, right now, we measure to the peak. Other communities will measure to the top of the wall, so you're not including the roof structure. Some communities measure to the midpoint of the roof. And so, maybe that's something we can look at as we're getting more of these hillside developments, to your point, you know, it really affects what you can do as far as the height of the building is different than if you're building on a flat area, how tall you can actually go. But, you know, maybe that's something we can look at as well, is how do we measure that actual height? Needs to be adjusted.
It seems like the benches are worth a question, is the Highland area, up in that bench, the Johnny Creek area, I think there's some homes that are pretty tall, and the country club areas, so maybe we take a look at that.
Yeah, we could look at that.
Okay.
Would it be inappropriate to increase those thirty-five and forty-five foot heights at this, when you're doing this redraft of the ordinance?
No, it's something we absolutely could do. If you'd rather, we just have a change on that residential height overall, we could. It does affect a lot more than just the benches, though, you're dealing with. A lot of residential areas where you might have a small house right next to this ginormous house, and it really affects the feel of the neighborhood when you start tweaking things like that. So, I'm more inclined to look at our method of measuring and how we can address that with the benches line. And maybe, instead of measuring with an average, we measure at the highest point, you know, or, so if you're on a slope, you measure where the slope is at the highest point, rather than taking an average that would allow for those. Those help homes on the bench to be a little taller, but it does affect anything in the flat neighborhood. So, there's just different ways we can look at that.
All I know is it's always nice to beat the ones that's on the uphill side.
That's right.
That's right, towards the neighbor.
I was going to say, a good example of what you're talking about is my neighborhood, the college neighborhood, where, I mean, we're fairly flat, so there isn't that much of an issue in terms of elevation, like one house being higher than the next, but when the Extreme Makeover House was built, and it not only was a lot larger in terms of, you know, filling the lot, so you're right up next to your neighbors now, but also much taller, so it kind of towered over, I mean, it's like looming over the house next door to it, in a way that was, you know, maybe not so desirable. So, I think you're going to have neighborhoods like that, where those kind of differences would, I mean, they would make, they would have a big impact, but not such a positive one.
Can these standards be applied differentially across different neighborhoods? Is that possible?
It is, but not with our code the way it's written. The best way to do that is with what's called a form-based code, which I would love to see Pocatello open up at some point, but it's going to take a long time to get there. And what that is, is you going into specific neighborhoods and creating a form-based code that addresses how a neighborhood is built, and how it associates with the properties adjacent to it, and it's very, very different than what Pocatello has. And so, it's going to take a long time for us to get to that, if that's the direction we go. Otherwise, you're looking at overlays and all this other stuff that gets really cumbersome. When a developer wants to develop something, they're looking at all these different things. It's not very friendly to understand. And then, we get confused with staff, because we're constantly having to flip back and forth, and it makes it hard in our current utility and system. But if we adjust, and that's one of the things we're looking at, probably starting with the downtown area, because it's the easiest one to do, is to start shifting towards more of a form-based code. So, I think you'll see that here in the next few years, as we start working on some of these neighborhood plans.
Can we do it sooner than that? I mean, building developments in the hillsides, I think we need to address that sooner than later.
Are you talking about addressing just the hillside developments?
That seems to be the most immediate need in our community.
I think as far as height goes, I think we can address the needs of the hillsides fairly easily with the way we measure height. That, I think that will, we can calibrate that in a way that would work.
How do we get that message to the contractors? That there's a way to do something different than what they're used to?
I think that the building officials can do that fairly well, part of the contractors' building organization, anyway. They could send that message, working with Brent, to make sure that it's the right message. Hey, there's a different way to do it, so build whatever you want, is the wrong message, but there's a different way to do it, we're going to be looking and measuring things a little bit different, we're...
And one of the things is what we do...
That might be the way to do it right now.
As we're doing code changes, we reach out to developers, we reach out to different builders, just to get their feedback on it. You know, this isn't something that we like to just create and dictate out, so we want their feedback as well, to make sure we're not inadvertently making something happen that we weren't intending to have happen. So, the more eyes that are looking at it, that's the practice that we always do.
Sounds reasonable. So, I'm getting head nods that, yeah, let's try to start working toward that new system, not to put more work on Jim, but he's got a comprehensive plan to get taken care of here, too, so. But that's... That's right, that's a good point.
He doesn't need to see his family, no.
You just have to hire another planner, that's all.
Okay, we're going back to the old standard, the old way. Just kidding. Jim, thank you, this sounds like it's a good move forward in the right direction, and so, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move to Agenda Item Seven, is the Riverside Golf Course Bridge Restoration. Planning and Development Service, is this you again, Jim?
Yep, it's me and...
This is the Jim Show today. This is awesome. He has been. Riverside Golf Course Bridge Restoration.
This is an old person's PowerPoint.
I like it.
Sorry, guys.
It's a perfect PowerPoint.
Okay, Jim Englesey, as you already know, this is Mrs. Carleen Dance, and she'll present to you her thoughts on the Riverside Bridge at the golf course. If you feel like you need to.
I just thought it would be kind of fun to see that. Okay, so, I'm just going to pull my mask down a little bit, if that's okay. Thank you, Jim, and I want to thank Jim for all of his help and advice on this. I walked the Riverside Golf Course like every morning and every night and a half for forty years, and I have noticed that this, that this bridge has slowly started to deteriorate and is in dire need of restoration. I love this bridge, and I kind of think of it as our mini Hogan Bridge, if any of you're familiar with Augusta National and the Hogan Bridge there, and I consider it Pocatello's Hogan, and I think there's a lot of golf courses that would just kill to have some, something like this on their golf course. But it's not only the golfers that see this bridge, there's a lot of people that walk this. It's probably the most used park in Pocatello, and as far as people coming from all over the state and out of state that see this, and people cross-country ski here all winter, so it's not just like it's never seen or used. But this bridge used to be... it's never seen or used. But this bridge used to be called the Sherman Bridge and was built 80 years ago by the WPA in 1940. By the, well, that's not 80. Anyway, it was built in 1940 by the WPA. And the, the Portina Rivers played a major role in Pocatello ever, in Pocatello, in the, in the history of Pocatello. And if you notice on there in the center, there's the one picture of the Indian teepees. And the Indians settled here on the river because it was close to the river. And where that large teepee is, is where, approximately where the golf course clubhouse is right now. So you can see that didn't, used to be a beautiful tree-covered area. It was sagebrush, but they found it plentiful. Later, this became a tech farm for the Idaho State University Tech Farm. And there were like lots, lots and lots of apple trees in that area. It was part of the tech farm. Up at the top, you see the Ross Park Golf Course. I didn't even know this until I started doing the research on this, that this area used to be, it, it wasn't the Riverside Golf Course, it was the Ross Park Golf Course. There was just a two-track, two tracks of the railroad and you just went, you would go across the railroad tracks to golf. And it, it's kind of interesting, but this, this bridge did, that the river ran, meandered through the whole Riverside Golf Course is what's the Riverside Golf Course now. And then, of course, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers came in, straightened up the river. And so it makes for an interesting golf course, but there's no water in there now. But the bridge is still there, thankfully, at this point. Why we should keep this bridge? I think this, this bridge is a big part of the history of Pocatello. I think preserving the history is really important. I think some people were just as soon just get rid of history, but I'm a real, as an older person, I really think that it's, it's a valuable thing that we have here. When I first started thinking about this, I didn't realize all that I would have to do. I thought, okay, I'm going to just go put a little jar in the golf course and have people put money in it and we'll raise the money to fix this bridge. But then I decided, okay, I'm going to have to get some grants. And I talked to Catherine Kirk at Idaho Heritage Trust. And she was very interested in the project. She actually came to Pocatello and looked at the bridge. She loves the bridge. She thinks it's a very worthwhile project. She put me in contact with Kevin Hatfield at Abstract Masonry in, in Salt Lake. And the reason she did that is because she just trusts his work. She's very familiar with it. He's done work in Idaho of restoration work. Kevin came to Pocatello and assessed the damage and assessed what would need to be done. And I think all of you have probably seen the budget, the proposed budget. Do they have that?
What is, what is that?
They do have that. Yeah, this rough budget. Okay. He also mentioned that this can be done in phases, that it could, you know, they could-
Do you want to, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You want to just tell us what that proposed budget is? That way maybe somebody watching TV can hear what you need.
Oh, okay. The proposed budget was $162,000. And he talked about how that they could do this in phases, that they would probably start with one phase. And this is so that we could just get accumulative grants every year. Like we could go back to Idaho Trust. And Catherine has said we could go back to Idaho Trust and get grant every year until we could complete this. And the only thing I didn't realize is that this is a city park. And so the city has to approve this grant and match the grant. And these are just a lot of things I've learned along the way. So the phases would, you know, as you can see, I mean, they're just different phases. The most important thing that needs to be done to start the preservation would be the capstone. And, and then he has like four phases. And I also have talked, not only have I talked to Catherine Kirk, I was, I won't say that. I won't say that I got a little discouraged when I saw the bid. But I just feel like she felt like it's, she feels like it's a really worthwhile project. And she's called and encouraged me and several times. And so I kind of really feel like she would be willing to give the grants and, and see this project to completion. I've also talked to Howard Burnett, who is on the board of the IF Foundation Grants. And he is really quite sure that we could get money and help from the IF Foundation. And I think there may be some other grants that we can get to supplement this. So. Have I said too much?
So we have a couple of questions here, it looks like. We'll go Claudia, then we'll go Rick, then we'll go Heidi, and then we'll go Linda.
Okay. So I don't know who to ask, if I should be asking. So that there is no structural concerns? It's all just cosmetic right now? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So we're not going to have to do structural stuff after we make it pretty, right?
No, that's our understanding. It's been fine. It's, it's currently being used as part of the number 18 T-box on the top. And then it's a cart pathway underneath the bridge. But we haven't had structural issues. It's just aesthetic, you know, water falling off, losing stones and kind of losing it.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to restore it aesthetically and then have to do structural repairs after the fact. I would rather make sure that it's not structurally compromised in any way. And the other thing is, is don't we have to put that out for bid?
So depending on the size of the phases that she talked about, that would be a possibility, yeah. We wouldn't be able to just pick our company.
We wouldn't just be able to automatically go with this gentleman from this company in Utah, right? We would, okay. I just wanted, I just-
We would put that out as a couple of works of construction. I think the company was used for budgetary purposes, which we typically do to kind of establish-
Right, right, to get a-
And to know, but yeah, absolutely.
But we would have to, right? Okay.
So what is the advent funding, is the lowest level?
So under $50,000, you can do it informally without all the bids.
So four, four phases. Each one would turn in under?
Depending on the need for the phases. You can't phase to avoid the bid loss, but if the phases are a, a creature of the project itself, then you would be okay, yeah.
I believe the maximum grant amount each time is $10,000.
15.
15.
It's 15 for Idaho Heritage. And so-
So you'd be at $30,000 each time?
There would, yeah, the city would have to match their 15. And then we would, we would be dependent on IF Foundation grant to supplement that to get us through each phase. So we would continue to apply for IF Foundation grants too.
Okay, Rick?
I'm going to piggyback on what Claudia had to say. Would it be appropriate, Jeff, to do a structural analysis before we begin this project?
Uh, yeah, we could definitely take a look at it. I, this is the first that I've heard of this. And so before I, before I comment one way or the other, whether it's structurally sound or not, I'd have to take a look at it. But I could definitely, we could definitely do that.
The people that looked at it, I mean, it's structurally sound considering that, no, there's not traffic going over it, like cars or anything. And so, but the people that looked at it, you know, felt like the abutments need to be, you know, strengthened and fixed. You can see that from the pictures, but.
Okay, Heidi?
Mrs. Dance, I just wanted to say thank you so much for your enthusiasm and your willingness to spearhead this. I was just so pleased when I saw this come up on our agenda that we have people like you who are invested in our community and want to improve it and make it look better. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much. And I think it's great. You're pursuing, you know, grant options and fundraising. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for your willingness and your enthusiasm to, to kind of see this through and do this. So thank you.
Linda?
And I want to express those same sentiments. And I'm a historian, so you had me at WPA project. When I heard that, I was like, wow. Absolutely, we need to preserve this. And it's exciting. And thank you for your, for your work to do that.
So Claudia and then Roger.
So I, I don't know. I, I'm not sure. My thing is dying. So is this an action item?
No.
No.
Oh, it is an, it does have action item on it, yes. But we don't have to have an action.
Okay. Cause all I want to say is, is like, and again, I'm going to echo what the two ladies said. It's amazing that you've taken this on. And I can just imagine how you've, the things you've learned, not necessarily the easy way, right? But I would be more comfortable, before we get super excited about the aesthetics, is making sure that it is structurally sound, that we don't, because then, because that, that's a game changer. And I'm not, I'm not saying that if it isn't, that we would, I would advocate tearing it down or anything. But I would just prefer to do things in the appropriate order-
I understand.
So that we're not just, you know, spending money willy-nilly, to do it the right way.
So real quick, Jeff, how long would it take you to give us a structural analysis on that?
Um, I could probably get out there in a couple of weeks and take a look at it and then determine whether or not we need to bring in an actual structural engineer or not.
So why don't you do that so that we know that it's structurally sound? At least for the ability, so we can do the facade on it and stuff. And then as soon as you get that done, we'll have you come talk to us at our third meeting of the month when we go over the study sessions.
Okay.
And the other, well, and the other thing I want to bring up is how, how does this, how does this work priority-wise with regard to the golf, the clubhouse there? I mean, are we, are we just picking this as a priority? I mean, I'm just wondering how this is working? John?
Mrs. Dance's PowerPoint's got John covered up over there.
It's not in my, he's, he's in my line of sight. That's why it's pretty much talking man.
Mayor Bladen, members of the council, John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director. I think the, the two can kind of work concurrently. It looks like Carleen is out kind of seeking some different grant funding and different funding opportunities than we would for the clubhouse. We would have to be, I guess, consider what the match percentages were. And if council would like to, you know, allow budget resources for that match if we be awarded the grants. But I think they, the two can kind of coexist concurrent. We won't have to different funding sources.
Okay. But it's still funding. I mean, we still have, the city's going to have to pony up money. So-
For grant matches, yeah. The IF, the IF doesn't have a match.
No, the IF does not have a match.
Do you know what the percentage is for the Idaho Heritage Trust or anything?
I think it's, they just have to match.
One to one.
One to one.
One to one.
So, but I guess, so I guess my, my thing is, is if we're, if we're going to have to come up with money, do, what, at what point do we decide where we want that money to go first? Do we want it to go to the clubhouse first? Or do we want it to go to the bridge restoration?
Or do we want to go to fixing the drainage?
Right. So I, I guess that's, I guess that's where I'm at with this. I, I think the clubhouse is important because it's a revenue situation and a, and a, but I like the idea of the bridge. But I, if we're, we're going to have to pick and choose, and we're going to have to prioritize, which I know I say all the time, but I mean, I really, money isn't growing on trees. So we need to figure out what we want to do first and, and then just kind of stay focused and knowing that we've got other projects down the road. Does that-
No, absolutely it does. I think when the department heads came together and, and were asked to provide, I think it was a top three or five list, the criteria that I lose use, I mean, I could come up with 25 different projects-
Right.
Was things that are, are not functioning currently. So this, this would not fall into that category. So things, I would say that things like the, you know, the water issue at Riverside and the clubhouse that's on its last legs might, might-
Trump.
Trump this priority. No offense.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Kind of using that criteria of non-functional versus aesthetic.
And then, and then outside of the golf course, since there, since the pools aren't going to be resurfaced, is, is the aquatic center going to be able to open next summer?
Well, it, it will open. We're, we'll still try to, you know, accumulate resources for the resurfacing. But yeah, it will, it will open in some fashion as well, we're able to open.
My feeling is, is that this is a, a project that if we can muster the support for, I, I think there's probably an alternative for city direct funding for it. Because I would think that if we gain grants and we gain donations, that could count towards our part in, in this. And if we could, I don't know if we can leverage like an IF grant to be matched by them. You know, in other words, there's a way in which you can structure your funding that I think doesn't disqualify you from one grant, but it doesn't necessarily have to come from city resources, directly from city resources. We can use an indirect route. And if we can get donations, if we can find other grant entities, so we build a pool, and I think we'll have to stage it. But if we can build a pool where we stage this, I don't know that we need to get into the competition in our priorities because I think it's, it's a standalone project if we keep it that way. And so I would want to keep it as a standalone project, but we work to find the resources that we normally wouldn't be using otherwise to get something done.
This to me sounds like a great project that maybe the, our Valley, our vision might, committee might look at.
You mean Portina Valley?
Portina Valley's, yeah.
Port, pardon?
Partners.
Should've said pardon.
What is, what is, they've changed the name of that-
Portina Valley Partners.
Portina Valley Partners. That might be something that they might be interested in, in helping work with and, and stuff if they're presented with it. Because I think it's a great project. I think it's, it's incredible. And I, and I think once we get it done, maybe we should have called Pocatello's Hogan because it's a great name for it, quite frankly.
Roger, Roger makes a good point. If we can figure out a way to finance it that isn't city money, then we don't have to prioritize it. But, but I want to go on record saying is if we, or if the city's going to use city money, we need to figure out what's, what's, what's more important and then go that route.
So I got Rick and then I've got Linda.
Jeff, while you're looking at the bridge for its structural status, could you see if you can see if anything needs to be done to temporarily stabilize what's happening out there so that we don't have additional expenses down the road where a few bucks now might, might take care of any more of that stuff falling off?
Sure.
Okay. Linda?
I agree with what Roger was saying. I, I think that, I mean, obviously we have to prioritize projects that we're going to take on. And we can't necessarily do everything, but I do believe we can do more than one thing. And we have to be able to walk and chew gum. So I think that we need to look at ways to make this happen. To go back to what you were saying in the beginning, is that you can tackle different projects concurrently because you're dealing with different money, different sources of money. So I think there are ways to make, make this happen. And I think it's a really exciting worthwhile project.
Yeah, Roger articulated that much better than I did, but that's exactly what I was-
But it's basically the same idea.
You know, this has a historical aspect, the grant funding and other sources that, that we would be going after for this particular project are not the same as other projects. So I think the two can kind of run concurrently and possibly using some grant funding as the match to others and then relieving the need for city to provide resources. Those are all the tracks.
Could I just say one thing? I mean, this is in regard to, you know, checking the, what can be done immediately. I think when the, when Kevin came and looked at it, he was saying that the stages that they would do, they would do the most crucial thing first. And that would be the wall, the cap on the top. Because the, it's cracking, as you can see in the pictures, and water's getting down. And that's what's popping the stones off. And so that would be the first phase would be to replace the, the cap of the bridge.
Stop that water.
To stop that water from getting down in there. And that's, so that's what I'm sure you could pay somebody here to go out and find, and they would tell you the same thing. And then he felt like the, the second phase would be the, the- And then he felt like the, the second phase would be the, the stones, the architectural stones, which have been, they've been take, they've fallen off, I guess, but there have been some attempts to repair them, they, they've got some form of concrete in there now, the original stones are not even in there, and now the concrete's breaking out. And I think that Greg Albright's biggest concern is the capstone, too, because those are the things that, that are breaking off, and he's worried they'll break up and fall. And they did mention that, that they do the work, they would do it in off-season, they would come in and do it off-season so that it wouldn't be during golf season, they would do it after the golf course closed in the fall, and they would work on it then, so. Just a few other little tidbits that would.
Sounds like everybody's pretty supportive and kind of excited about it, and thinks it's a good idea if Jeff will get that, so we can have a discussion about it a little bit later, and then maybe we need to see about Porton Partners and see if, if they're, if they're even interested in, in doing something like this, but definitely if we can find some stuff, it'd be nice, so.
I have these extra copies of the budget, if that would help at all, and then, and then be happy to keep my PowerPoint if you like, for reference.
I love the PowerPoint. It's fantastic.
Actually, that's a lot of work, it's more work.
Well, it was low energy.
That's right, low energy, we're saving energy. Thank you so much, thank you very much for your, for your presentation and stuff, I think, I think we've got a path forward here.
It's eco-friendly.
That's for sure, thank you.
And it's reusable.
That's right.
It's one of my grandkids' projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we are adjourned from this meeting, the council will take a few minutes break, and then we'll.